I don't know if I even need to go online.
I don't think you do. You might need to help me with sharing the screen, but I already set it up so it's there and all I have to do is hit play, so I should be good. All right, here.
We'll find out.
Start our meeting.
It is six o'clock, five o'clock. So I'd like to call the boarder. The workshop hybrid meeting for the Woodstock Planning Board for August 31st, 2023. Do we have any updates?
I just want to welcome, we have a new member here, Dr. Jeanie Tartell. We are so excited to have you with us and look forward to working with you.
Okay, well, you came out of a good time doing a workshop, so.
Yep, I like that.
Okay, communications and announcements, we have the talk of towns topics and we see that August 22nd. So our new business and scheduled business is a workshop.
Do you want to approve the minutes real quick?
Oh yeah, let's do the minutes of August 17th. If everybody is in favor, adopt them as is. Okay, Judy, you good with the meeting, the minutes?
Yes.
All right.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, so this workshop is on conservation and land use. And it's no surprise we're reviewing it now because we might have a case coming before us, a rather large one, that wants to do a subdivision conservation. But when I reviewed the whole subdivision conservation method and Judy had been working on that for a long time, it occurs to me that we may have other projects, other subdivisions that come before us to apply this to not just Woodstock national project. So I think that the planning board, it would be a good tool for us to really know how to use a conservation subdivision. It's, as you will see through the webinar, it does a lot of things. It preserves the areas, wetlands, and watercourses that need reserved, and it allows us to change lot sizes, which in all my years on the planning board, we've never been able to do. We always had to stick with what was in the done. So, without further ado.
All right.
It's on your one, we're not having to stick there.
I have it all set up. If you guys want to move at any point and head out there or to here, I kind of put the chairs here so you could see the TV.
I think I'm going to have to move. Besides my hearing, my sight is not the greatest.
Well, I'm going to look at the online machine.
Good afternoon to everyone.
Hi.
Thank you for joining us today.
It's our favorite.
Conservation and Land Use Specialist with the D.C. State Hudson River Eschre Program through partnership with Cornell University. Welcome to the Conservation and Land Use webinar series. Today's webinar will discuss conservation subdivision, which is a flexible approach to subdivision design that concentrates development and allows for preservation of valuable natural areas and open space. And we're very pleased to have two regional experts with us here today presenting about this policy, Ted Fink and John Lyons. And I'll introduce them a little bit further into this introduction. Before we start, just a few webinar details to review. If you're having difficulty connecting to the audio from your computer, you can choose switch audio by clicking on the three dots next to the red exit button at the bottom of the screen. And there you'll also find options to request a callback or to call in by phone. If you need help, please reach out to us using the chat function in the bottom right corner of the screen. If you have questions for the presenters once they begin, please use Q and A. And if it's not open already, you can find Q and A by clicking the three dots next to chat in the bottom right corner of the screen. Note that your phone lines are muted. The webinar is being recorded and we'll notify you when it is available. That's probably going to be sometime next week. We'll follow up and also share the presentation slides from today. And at the end of the webinar, we kind of request your feedback through a survey that will pop up. And last of all, for those of you who are seeking municipal training credit, you'll receive an automated email confirmation sent by Red Act at the end of the program. For those of you who are new to the series, the Hudson River Eschre Program is a special program at the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation.
This happened so long ago, this was when we originally took it.
So it's old and it's not.
Yeah, I don't know if it's going to be logged on. I mean, unless you're watching it under some.
It's easier to watch this one.
Have it, right? And the green area shown on the map here. And we're working to achieve many key benefits, including the vital eschre system and these fish and habitats, clean water, healthy tributaries, climate-adapted communities, conserve natural areas in a watershed, and an informed and engaged public, as well as access for all to the Hudson River. And within the Eschre Program, our Conservation and Land Use team works with municipalities and regional partners to identify and conserve foreign habitats and natural areas through local land use planning and decision-making. And my fellow Conservation and Land Use Specialist, Christine Vanderland, is also here from the webinar today. Both of us are able to provide technical assistance on a variety of conservation planning and policy projects. Our program website is a clearinghouse for guidance and resources on these topics, and we'll share the link to that through the chat as well. So our next webinar will be in late April. We're still narrowing down the date. And we'll profile municipal planning and policy actions to conserve natural areas within the framework of New York's Climate Smart Communities Certification Program. We'll discuss the key roles that natural areas play in climate resilience and provide a brief overview of the Climate Smart Communities Certification Program and outlines climate smart actions for planning zoning and protection of active areas, and conservation subdivision is one of them. We'll also hear a case study from a community that has implemented many of these actions and achieved certification status. We'll share the link to register for the April webinar event when we follow up with you after today's webinar. And with that, I am very pleased to introduce our guest speakers. Ted Fink is a professional planner and the founder of RePlan, a firm that provides general community and planning services to municipalities throughout the Hudson Valley and upstate New York. Mr. Fink has over four decades of experience in planning and land use controls and helps communities develop their own unique vision for conservation and development. He has helped many municipalities with adopting conservation development practices and other sustainable development techniques, and has offered unique land use controls to protect biodiversity. Mr. Fink is also an adjunct professor with Marist College of Science, teaching environmental science and policy courses. And our second speaker is John Lyons. He is a land use attorney who's been practicing law for 38 years. He is a founding partner of the law firm Grant and Lyons, L.L.P., which is dedicated solely to environmental land use and real estate law. In his land use practice, Mr. Lyons provides counsel to planning boards and zoning boards of appeal and assists town boards with formulating land use policies and drafting land use laws. Mr. Lyons also has a long background in land conservation and represents conservation organizations in conservation easement matters. He currently serves on the Board of Directors of the Castle Center for Conservation and Development and recently stepped down from the Board of Directors of the Winnicke Land Trust in Rindock. So we're really excited to have both of you with us today. And so we'll start off with Ted and and we'll take a few minutes for questions after his talk before John's talk begins. And we'll have some more time for questions at the end of the program as well. But as we go along again, please feel free to enter any questions you have using the Q and A function.
Not us.
So I will, since I can share, pass the control to you, Ted.
I sat in on the original one, sorry.
I don't see you.
I'm going to show you that Melissa Gray.
I see her.
Can you see that?
No, because I don't ever.
No, Victor's calling it the speakers.
Yeah, it's the speakers.
Sure.
I got to thank John Lyons because he reminded me about this when I was trying to get him here and they're swamped.
So when was this actually done?
I heard you're still muted. I meant to look at the date and I forgot. Six, seven months ago, recent.
Here it comes.
All right, and how's that?
Good.
Okay, good, all right. Well, good afternoon, everyone. First of all, thank you for attending. My goal today is to tell you a little bit about conservation subdivisions, some need-to-know issues related to how you go about designing conservation subdivisions, how you go about an out here in, in the local regulations, so the background for conservation subdivisions. And I don't even walk away today with a roadmap for your community and how you may be able to bring the conservation subdivision design process to your community. So, first of all, all right, whoops, went too far. So, essentially, conservation subdivisions are a type of cluster development. And you're probably familiar with cluster development. Many communities have already adopted some clustering provisions in their zoning and subdivision regulations, sometimes both zoning and subdivision. Conservation subdivision really though is a much more effective way to be able to design open space areas as part of a cluster subdivision. So I'm going to walk you through exactly where we came from. First thing you need to know is that the whole concept was really originated by an eccentric guy by the name of Ian McCarron in the 1960s. He was a landscape architect and he also taught at the University of Pennsylvania. And he came out with a groundbreaking book in 1971. You can see my blog, your copy on the slide in front of you. But essentially, what he did back in the 1960s, he did a number of studies as a landscape architect. He came up with this concept for integrating the environment into development. And he did a whole study of Staten Island, which you can see on the right side of the screen, where back in those days, it was very much old school, of course, where he took Staten Island, he developed a series of acetate overlays that displayed things like land use, education, ecological associations, wildlife habitats, forests, and so forth. And in so many, one on top of another, his hope was that through that process, that areas that would be would be suitable for development could be revealed, areas that were suitable for conservation could also be revealed. And he put this all into his book, Design with Nature. And nothing really happened to it until the 1980s when when a planner by the name of Randall O'Reilly started to pick up on this and decided that one way to be able to really make design with nature usable and available to a wider audience was to use it with, combine it with cluster subdivision techniques, which had been enabled by many states. And the orange is half this, I've wrote since the early 1960s clustering option. And I'm going to get into exactly what all this stuff means design as I talk through the process. But in any case, Randall really, he innovated this process. He came out with a couple of books. One was called World by Design, another one was Conservation Subdivision. And these were in the 1990s. So I was a old fan of Ian McCarron's work. And when I picked up on World by Design and the conservation subdivision process, when I looked at these books in the 1990s, I brought it to one of my clients at downtown, which was the Towne Warwick. I was a planner there for 31 years. In Orange County. And we decided to try and take this approach of conservation subdivision, a better way of clustering, and integrate it into the town's comprehensive plan and then later in the zoning. And so in 1999, the town adopted a new comprehensive plan that specifically recommended the use of conservation subdivision. So just so you know, there's also other ways that municipalities have described this as open space subdivisions. And I think the idea was to move away from use of the term clustering. And I'll get into that in a moment as to why so many of us have done that. But these are the topics that I'm going to be covering today, just going over a general introduction to this. You know, how it can be integrated into the municipal planning processes. I'm going to discuss just a few other tools that can be used for conserving open space. Then we're going to get into the nuts and bolts, the four-step process, how it works, what a municipality needs to do in order to integrate these steps into their zoning and subdivision regulations. I'm going to go through, I'm going to give you some local examples and talk about some of the other considerations, such as long-term management of the open space within, within a cluster development. So, just starting on. You know, when you think of the term conservation subdivision, it really does sound like an oxymoron, but it is one of many tools that can be used to to develop communities and to retain the most important aspects of the natural and the cultural environment. And so even though it does sound like an oxymoron, it is a good technique. It's one of many that should be used by communities. And there are some of the patients, I'll get into that a little bit later. So, first of all, things you should know. What you're looking at right now on the right side of your screen is a conventional subdivision plan, an illustrated area that is subject to a conventional approach to subdivision development, where every bit of open space is occupied by house lots and roads and driveways and those sorts of things. And the approach at the bottom shows how those same number of lots that are spread throughout a site can be laid out in a way where important natural resources such as biodiversity, agriculture, and water quality and wetlands and streams and ponds and those sorts of things can all be incorporated into the open space within the subdivision. So first of all, first thing you need to know is that it creates development, but the open space that's protected does have to be protected in perpetuity. And the enabling laws, the references are in that first bullet, town law, section 278, village law, and general city law, all have counterpart enabling requirements that any community in New York State can use. And the first thing about clustering or conservation subdivision is that this is an administrative planning technique. It can come about, other than the cost, of course, to update your regulations, it can come about without any sort of funding stream such as a purchase of it on a rent program or bond authorization to buy and acquire open space within the community. This can allow for the development that is already authorized, but can benefit by having open space protected as part of the development rules that go on. And so while municipalities are all authorized to be able to require clustering, they're not required to by various state laws. And there are three different ways that can be integrated into your code. One is that it's simply, it's more passive, it's allowed. So cluster regulations can be designed so that anybody, anybody that wishes to subdivide property could be able to do so using a cluster plan instead of a conventional plan. It can be encouraged. Certainly, any municipality can do everything that it wants to encourage it. Some municipalities have even provided some incentives for developers to be able to follow a cluster approach. And the third way, of course, is each of the three laws that enable it also allow for a planning board to mandate clustering based upon a variety of different requirements that would have to be fulfilled in order to acquire this as an alternative to the conventional plan. The goal, of course, for clustering as for conservation subdivision is to alter the standard lot requirements and to reduce the minimum lot size instead of generally required by zoning as a trade-off for protecting open space. But there's also other things that can be included in the rules. So if, for instance, a poor housing is a concern, you can get housing types such as multifamily or row houses and some of the other options that I'll talk about later, these can all be included within the rules for your conservation subdivision. And they can also be broad and narrow, but the uses cannot be changed. That's very true for many neighborhoods. And one thing that a lot of people always realize is that it can be applied not only to residential subdivision development, but also in cases where non-residential subdivisions are also proposed. So, this is a quick little illustrative graphic that shows you the basis of the four-step process. I'm just going to include it here. First, top left graphic, what you're looking at is just an illustrated farm site with some forest and stream corridor and some sort of day of things. And so the first thing that's done is there's a conservation analysis of the site that identifies what are called primary and secondary conservation areas. And we'll get into what that means later. The second step is to locate where the streets are going to go and the trails throughout the areas that are identified as development areas. The third step is to locate the house sites. And the fourth is to draw the lot line. And one of the reasons why I wanted to highlight the actual steps in the process earlier on is because this is actually almost opposite the kind of approach that was taken that, Dave, clustering the bad name, that generally sites always have some sort of developmental constraints where it's steep slopes, poor soils, could be wetlands, could be streams, resources that can't really be developed, that became a way for a developer to be able to minimize their impacts while also simply shoving those areas into the open space. And that is what was left over. There were a lot of examples with poorly designed cluster plans out there. And so conservation subdivision was designed to process to make sure that there was an effective step-by-step process designed to put conservation first and foremost in any plan that's done to subdivide a site. So, conservation subdivisions, it's important to ensure that there are conditions that are placed on the ownership to use the maintenance, the open space. These are the kinds of things that should always be included in a conservation subdivision regulation. These kinds of things can even protect farming within a community if that becomes an objective of your town or your village or whatever area. Generally, density is not permitted. If that is something that people are concerned about, that's going to result in more loss, then it could be developed under a conventional plan. But, the other thing is, in terms of the open space, one of the misunderstandings that people often have is that if this is going to be open space, it's going to be public open space, but that's not necessarily correct. That developers can't be forced to dedicate the open space to a municipality. They can't be forced to open it to the public. This is something that can be worked out through the through the conditions that are placed on the ownership and the use of the open space, and they can be specified in the municipal code. So, conservation subdivision, it's just one of the many tools that are available to municipalities. It just so happens that it's a relatively easy thing to place into your comprehensive planning documents. There are good models out there of other communities that have developed regulations for conservation subdivisions. So there's lots of good ones out there. And I think it's reassuring to know that this particular process has been in place in Towne Warwick for more than two decades now. And I personally was involved in review and approval of multiple conservation subdivisions in the community. In fact, at one point, it already had become the predominant form of subdivision development in the community. So, other options that municipalities can, can use to conserve open space, overlay districts. I know the Eschre Program had a whole webinar last year that was devoted to conservation overlay districts. Planning and development is a tool that's been around for many decades now that results in a an individual plan for development of property that can include simply residential uses. It can require a mix of uses. But one of the features of planning and developments is that there's also open space that is protected as part of it. But it's a, it's a different process. It's enabled by separate provisions within town, village, and general city law. There's also park and recreation, land dedication for communities that are made in lieu of land dedication for the recreational and the park needs of subdivisions and for growth within their community. Development rights that can be transferred, they can be purchased. I'll get in a little bit later to some of the options for doing that. Just use of, fee simple acquisition of lands for protection of open space. Critical environmental areas under secret can also be enabled so that they, the goal is to protect and conserve open space. Many communities in the valley now are authorized to prepare community preservation plans and to adopt a community preservation fund that's used. This is a form of purchase and development rights, but it has to be authorized by the legislature. In the Hudson Valley, Warwick, Red Hook, town, there's a number of communities that have been individually authorized to be able to prepare community preservation plans, establish programs. In general, Westchester, Putnam, and Ulster counties, any municipality within those three counties are also permitted to establish community preservation programs within them. And a really good source of information on open space protection is a guide that was prepared by the state called Local Open Space Planning Guide. And certainly if you have questions on any of these sorts of options that are available, that's a good place to start. There's a wealth of information there for research and further aspects of that. So what's some of the justification for, for mine? It's important, you know, as I mentioned earlier, conventional subdivisions merely resolve in house lots and streets. And conservation subdivision provide way more. Some of the benefits, you know, we all benefit from things like plant and animal genetic diversity, lands that are protected as open space. You know, we need the natural products of nature. They're essential to our physical and mental health. There's a lot of studies now that have come out about patients in hospitals recover faster if their rooms merely front green spaces that recovery people can view as opposed to other areas where hospital rooms face highways and buildings and things like that. And the same thing has been done for schools where achievement of high students is better on the side of schools that face forests and open spaces versus the size of schools that face the street. So there's real physical and mental health benefits that, that we can approve from, from open space. It's the enemy. Generally, any property that is sighted near or next to a, a protected open space area is going to sell for a higher value than properties that lack that access. It's also, it's integral to our culture and identity to have areas that we can enjoy nature, we can recreate, we get free environmental services from floodplains and from wetlands and a whole variety of other things. And it's all also used as a solution to climate change. So an important thing to keep in mind though is that while conservation subdivision can help to bring about more open to bring about more open space protection in a community, that's an objective of the community. Comprehensive planning of a municipality can reveal many other effective ways to be able to preserve open space. So we have a couple of goals. This is hot out of the press. So end of January, President Biden signed an executive order to conserve this 30% of our lands and waters by the year 2030. And just before that, Governor Walcott also signed a law that was passed by both the Assembly and the Senate doing the same thing, to support and contribute to national efforts to conserve 30% open space in New York State by the year 2030. So this is something that these aspirational sorts of proclamations and laws are finding their way into our culture more and more. And one of the things that I can tell you about Conservation Subdivision and the kinds of ways that people want to live in my 40 years of comprehensive planning and working in many municipalities throughout the city of New York State. And there are some commonalities that is always found whenever we do public opinion surveys, we do visioning sessions. People want to preserve nature and open space in their community. What's most important to them are things like water resources and habitats. They want to avoid sprawl development and guide growth to areas that are already developed. And of course, Conservation Subdivision, one of the criticisms of it is that it does allow more development to be reached from. But there's also other factors that go against it as well. And some of the obstacles are that after World War II, we had the expansion of the interstate highway system and expansion in general of roads throughout our country. And this led for much easier access to areas that were once pretty much off limits for development. Road, farms, forests, open spaces. They created development opportunities throughout New York and Hudson Valley. And of course, another obstacle is that in order to change your plan, your zoning, your subdivision regulations, it takes time and it takes the determination of leaders to be able to ensure that these things are properly accounted for. And I've already talked about cluster zoning, but you know, you can see on this little graphic here that many communities in New York State lack the necessary tools at this point to even do that. So I'm assuming that as you're attending this, it will be a while to learn more about Conservation Subdivision, that we do have zoning, we do have subdivision regulations, because those are really great to start. So the first thing in terms of Conservation Subdivision is that it's always approved in a density-neutral manner. So if your zoning specifies that each house has to be on a two-acre lot, and you have a certain density that landlords are accustomed to in your community, it doesn't change any of the density that is already attributed to properties of the different zoning districts. The one thing that Conservation Subdivision does is to make sure that that density is preserved together with the protection of open space. And once we get into how that happens, I'll get into a little bit more. So it does create more efficient street utility patterns. Very important thing is it protects habitats in perpetuity in the open space if they're properly identified through the conservation analysis that occurs on a site-by-site basis. Even things, cultural resources like scenic beauty, archaeology, historic sites, these can all be part of the open space for the Conservation Subdivision. And so some communities have even gone as far as to require 80% open space, and I'll get into that in a moment. So where to begin? Comprehensive planning should really come first. That's the basis for any changes to your zoning and especially your zoning, but also your subdivision regulations and so forth. Many other ways to be able to identify open space, your open space planning, a natural resource inventory, which is something that is certainly encouraged by the Hudson River Esper program. And many communities are getting a lot of daylight into the natural resources inventories. And it's a great way to be able to identify what's most important to the community. Other ways to be able to do it are land protection plans, community preservation plans, LWRTs if they're available. E C and Esper program both have great mapping applications that are available on the internet. Of course, things like Conservation Advisory Council boards. So how does it happen? Well, first, Legislative Board has to authorize cluster subdivisions simultaneously with approval by planning boards. Legislative Board sets the kind of conditions that are necessary for cluster to occur. The zoning subdivision regulations can be amended to include the Conservation Subdivision process. And these can be done to accept or require a flexible adjustment to the law's standards so that lots are going to be laid out in their community even conventional. The laws do have to specify whether permitted, when, and the objectives. And of course, I mentioned already that planning boards can be enabled to mandate cluster subdivisions as well. This is a little sketch here of the kinds of procedures that you would want to consider for establishing a Conservation Subdivision design process. Purposes is key to having a clear law that identifies exactly why it is that this is being enacted. It gives authorization to the planning board. There's a determination as to whether it's going to be mandated or simply volunteer, or the uses that are authorized, for instance, for open space. There's the density determination. All these sort of steps are the kinds of things that do need to be included in the cluster regulations. There is, first of all, in order to determine what are the number of lots that can be approved in a cluster development, because after all, this is not going to be laid out with the engineering and everything else that you need for a conventional plan. But because you're going to have to figure out a way to identify what are the number of dwelling units or the number of lots that can be approved in a cluster development, there has to be a way to be able to come up with that number. Some communities will go with what they call a yield or a conventional plan that conforms to the normal size, density requirements, and so on, within your municipal code already. The other, and what can be easier for some communities, is the formula, where you take the overall gross density of a lot, you determine what needs to be subtracted from it, such as wetlands, steep slopes, and so on. And then you come up with a formula that's based upon the density requirements of your zoning law. So some of the steps in the process, I'd like to get into now to sort of the nitty-gritty on how this whole works. So one of the very first documents that's presented is to examine the conservation that exists on the site and surrounding the site. And what I'm showing you here is a natural site context plan that was prepared for a subdivision in the town of Warwick. This is the site right here, okay? And I'm going to be coming back to this a little bit later. The reason why this is shaded is because this is a property right next to it that already was subject to a Conservation Subdivision. And so one of the requirements in Warwick was that there be a connection, connectivity, between a site that's proposed for Conservation Subdivision and whatever exists in the surrounding area. And this includes other things such as color-protected lands, forest linkages, wetlands, ground opportunities, aquifers, and some other things that would relate to your municipal objectives. And this is all developed on the basis of information that's already available in the public domain. So the process begins with the conservation analysis of the site. Primary conservation areas, these are areas that likely could not be developed in any case. These are the wetland areas that are protected, federal state local wetlands if they exist in your local community, endangered species habitats, streams and ponds, steep slopes, 25% or greater floodplains. So these are areas that typically would not want to allow development to occur in the community in any case. The other set of factors over here are secondary conservation areas. These are areas that are also important based upon municipal objectives, but they can also add value to the subdivision. And they, sometimes you can, you can, I think, come up with ways to be able to ensure that as many of these features are protected as possible. But there's also the need to provide for a certain density based upon that density that's been determined through your conventional yield plans or your formula. So these are the kinds of things that are also identified. And this is all done in a four-step process where the various steps are illustrated so that the review board can make sure that all of the steps in the process are being followed properly. And this happens to be a parcel of land that had two features to it. And this is in the town of Warwick as well. One of the objectives of the town is to protect farming and agriculture within the community, also to protect water resources and habitats and other areas. And this was a particular one that had both. And it was the subdivision that was approved. It's been built. At this point, this shows you the initial analysis of primary and secondary conservation areas. This is very much an illustrative plan. We have many more documents that also identify these features that are shown on this graphic in a much more detailed way. But this was done for sketch plan purposes as part of the subdivision plans. The next one, this is where you go through the step one, and it actually has three sub-steps. This is where we then identify the areas of primary and secondary conservation areas. And basically, the lands that are left over are where they don't have the highest priority resources of the property. So these are areas that would be subject to potential development. So an actual potential development area is identified on the plan. A very important part of this is for the planning board to do a field visit, to actually go over concepts, and to take a look at exactly what needs to be done. And just to give you an idea, these are the kinds of analyses that you would do as far as how much open space does need to be protected as part of the open space in a Conservation Subdivision. And this is, this will be available in the PDF so you can examine it in later time. But it's the kind of decision-making that has to go into the process. So in this case, this was a site that had, I believe it was 15 or 16 lots. Farming, of course, gets protected in this area. The more sensitive natural resources get protected in this area. And the houses are sighted in sort of a midpoint on the property where both of these two objectives would be allowed for that development. So this is a step that shows where the road goes. It had to be sighted in this location because of site distance considerations. There is always a variety of things that have to be accounted for this. But the idea was to avoid fragmented habitats, to minimize the road lengths, provide combinations for poller transit and bicycle, and those sorts of things. And this is the final plan that came out. Now you've got the lot lines that have been drawn in. And so how the open space is going to be used, the farmer proposals that you continue to farm the property. This is an area that is going to be left to nature. So those are the kinds of things that are all brought about in that four-step process. Let me show you a couple of examples of this. This is a six-lot rural subdivision in Pennsylvania, where there was a tree farm, a meadow, a pond, and a small forest. And there were six lots that were approved in this one. This is more of a suburban habitat, also in Pennsylvania, where there was a road with mature trees. The plan was designed to rail that. There were some scattered trees also in other places. And so this was a plan that was developed to be able to protect in those areas. For villages and cities, this is a case where you may want to lower the minimum required amount of open space, where density is more desirable to gain access to services and infrastructure and so forth. But yet to be able to have some sort of conservation in the backyards of palaces. And if you wanted to be able to address things like affordability, cottage ports is something that is growing around the country as an option for seniors, as an option for small families, where there's sheer open space, small units that are all clustered around there. And this can be done either subdivision or other ownership options. So here's an example of a small, four-lot subdivision. This shows you the four steps that were involved in the process to be able to identify what are the features that would compose the protected open space. This is the actual plan of development that shows how the lots and houses were all sighted very close to one another. This is your conventional plan that established four units as being the base density for it. And of course, this is the development that would have occurred. All of these lots could have been further developed by the landlords. So there's no protected open space left in it. So this is an example of a minor subdivision. Here, going back to that same one that I talked about earlier, Warwick, this is a very large development. This was a 250-acre site. 53 lots were proposed. And the idea was to identify the wetlands, the habitats, and so forth on this property. And it eventually resulted in a plan that provided for 63% of open space with habitats, forests, and farmland being a part of the open space within this particular development. And this again shows you the four steps that resulted. This also shows that joint property that I was talking about earlier, where there was a development proposed on that one as well. So that allowed for the open space to be contiguous to that other property so that there was better connectivity. And this is the resulting plan that came out with 63% open space. And this, of course, is the conventional plan, yield plan that was used to develop the 53 lots as the basis for the cluster Conservation Subdivision. So just a final word on a couple of things. For the management of the open space, a couple of tools that people can use. In this particular development, ECM subdivision was called. We developed a homeowner's guide to be able to give to the future residents of the subdivision. There was also a stewardship manual that was used for protection of some really special habitats that existed on this property. There were wetlands, it was a turtle habitat, there were rural pools on the property. And so all of these things were addressed in a stewardship manual to try and result in ecologically sensitive development as well as long-term maintenance that all the homeowners that would buy into it. So the other things, too, that some communities have done, these are taken right from the town of Rhinebeck's subdivision regulations. Rhinebeck has illustrated guidelines. This is simply the first page or several pages of guidelines that illustrate the kinds of concepts that the town would like to see from applicants for subdivision approval. The town has a standard site resource analysis assessment that answers a series of questions about habitat and conservation of the property that has to be submitted as part of the subdivision application. So these are, just to give you a little sense of the kinds of things that are all in place in other communities. And so these are a few links, we need a PDF. There'll be links here to the Esper program, to the actual cluster rules that were adopted in Rhinebeck. Warwick general code has a lot of examples of other communities and how they can do research on communities that have adopted Conservation Subdivision. These are Randall Loren's websites. He's still in the game and he's still out there devising communities. He's still out there authoring publications. American Planning Association has a lot of good things to say about Conservation Subdivision. And with that, I think I'm ready to take any questions then, anyone has.
Thank you, Ted. That's wonderful. So we do have a couple of questions that have come in. And what is, a general question, someone saying they're familiar with the benefits of Conservation Subdivision, but that developers tend to avoid it in their community. And they want to know, what's the carrot to entice the voluntary use of Conservation Subdivision?
Oh, that's a great question. Well, I mean, first of all, just to remind everyone... Well, I mean, first of all, just to remind everyone, it can be mandated. Okay, so with the use of that one word in your regulation, the planning board has the ability to be able to say, okay, there's specials, freshwater wetlands on this property and that is a reason why we want you to develop a conservation subdivision design. So that's the easy answer. The tougher answer, and of course, we didn't kind of do this in the town of Warwick, where back in the late nineteen-nineties, there were a lot of skepticism about clustered subdivision because there were a lot of bad examples of clustered developments that had to go through these kinds of discreet step-by-step-by-step analysis of property to lead to the conclusion of what are the most important parts of the environment that are going to be protected. And so what Warwick did, Warwick said, okay, well, what we're going to do is we're going to reduce density kind of line. So their two-acre zoning districts became four-acre minimum lot size zoning districts. The carrot they threw to developers to try and incentivize this program was that if you came in as an applicant for subdivision approval in what was formerly a two-acre district, which then became a four-acre district, you could get the density achievable by calculating a three-acre bonus. So it was a little bit of a give-back because Warwick was unsure about the process themselves. And I'm not sure that they were totally convinced that it was the right way to do it. And lo and behold, one after another, after another, every application that came in after that decision was made in two thousand and one was a conservation subdivision. And it became so successful that ten years later, in, we're going two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, they happened to adopt that plan and took away that incentive for clustering because it had become so popular in the community.
That's fascinating. So I see a bunch of questions here that are related to the next speaker's presentation. John Lyons will be talking more about the conserved open space and how the different options for how that can be set aside and managed, whether through conservation easement or otherwise. But I want to ask one more question here. One quick one was whether there's draft model language or model language to include in a comprehensive plan. You talked about the importance of the comprehensive plan as a foundation for establishing this policy and this community is in the process of updating their comp plan, so what should they be including?
Okay, so I think two of the towns where I've worked on this, Town of Rhinebeck and Town of Warwick, both have comprehensive plans that have very strong recommendations for incorporating conservation subdivision into rural pools that are used. And so those would be places to start. Other towns that I'm familiar with have also done it. I know there's a number of communities in the Hudson Valley that have it. And maybe what I can try and do in there is to develop a list of communities that I'm familiar with that have done it. And you can send that out along with the slides and that would work on others as well.
Great, that would be wonderful.
I'll do my best.
Thanks, so I think.
Right now is an interesting time.
Coming on to them.
Shares controls with John.
I meant to look at the date and I didn't have time.
It's recent enough.
Go ahead, the next presentation.
We can pause it later if you want.
And we'll have some more time for questions at the end of the webinar. So John, you should be able to share your screen now.
Yeah, there.
I think what they're reviewing is an overall picture and Woodstock.
We're already ahead of.
Is already ahead of that game. We already have wetlands law, we have steep slopes, we already have sink overlays.
I remember watching this and the confluence, but fam acres too, I mean.
Well, that's an example, but.
So what we were unable to do was to take these areas that are already protected out of development. But what they haven't touched on to, and it's a reality in Woodstock, I'm a surveyor, I see this, is developers want to get the most money for their lots. So the developer's going to get more money for a five-acre lot than a one-acre lot. And so the incentive to take this plan is to be conserved out of the sales and to minimize that is a tough, tough job for us to do.
But that's not the only way to do it, which is John Lyons' part of the presentation.
Right, well, two things they haven't mentioned, maybe John will get into it, but they never mentioned where it comes from, which is Article 278, which is what legally the state gives the town to do such a thing, a conservation subdivision. But Article 278 requires that the town board approve the conservation subdivision. We're not going to get into it tonight because it's way too much. The town of Coxaki has developed a conservation subdivision bylaws in their codes. And I was talking to Bill McKenna about that. And what we need to do is the same thing.
That's what we're doing here, that's in the current draft.
Right, so the idea is that if the town board approves the planning board to be able to do those, then we don't have to go to the town board for each one because they're pretty indecisive right now. And the issue for us is, they were saying is that the planning board can require it. And I can see that's going to be an issue with developers. Because the way we've been doing it, the way we did fam acres was it was a hundred-and-seven acre lot, which got broken into twelve-something lots, fourteen lots. But each lot was big, twelve acres, fifteen acres, even in a five-acre zoning. So the owners of those lots own twelve acres or fifteen acres even though they can't develop all right.
And that's one of the models. They're still selling twelve acres.
Right.
But you've got the responsibility for preservation in most of that.
So I don't know what, you know, I know John Lyons, but the issue that we're facing is what do you do with the conservation areas? So if you're going to take a hundred-acre lot and fifty of it is to be conserved, who owns that fifty acres and who controls it? Because like we did with fam, they broke it up, so each lot owner owned part of that.
And you're requiring HOA, which is.
But they have a homeowners association that's responsible for the model.
Yes, that's what you're doing.
And that's one of the models.
But a developer, when they look at, you know, seventy-five acre lot, in a five-acre zoning going, okay, I've got so many lots and I can get so much money for each lot. And you'd say, well, unfortunately, fifty percent of that you can't. So you're only going to have, you know, the same amount of lots, but smaller, which is tough for a developer.
But that's, but that's only one way to design it. Where the part that is not buildable is owned in some other way. Having it be owned by a property owner, but they can't build on it, is another way. There are multiple, and I'm sure that's what John's going to do.
Which is what we do with fam, yeah.
Right, right, put it in the deed, put it on the map.
Way to do it.
And the other issue that we also have now in Woodstock is the critical environmental area, which we do in the Xena Woods. That now requires preservation of forests and animal habitat and.
Lots of wetlands and some steep slopes.
But also for avenues, for.
Quarters.
Quarters, for wildlife quarters. And that's a tough one because now you're telling people that we're going to cut right through your property in a non-developal thing for wildlife quarter. Which, if you look at most of the lots that we, big ones we have coming out like the Woodstock.
National.
If it ever comes up, but if you look at it, their sections and wetlands are separated.
What they're doing is not buildable. I mean, it's just not, they can't do that if we pass the current law. And I don't know if they can do that with what we already have.
No, but the other point that I think that they're showing is we can do it in smaller, you know, smaller subdivisions, in minor subdivisions and even smaller than that. But what maybe John Lyons will make clear is that how does the planning board decide to mandate a conservation subdivision?
I should say, Peter, that as a result of your communication with me about the Coxaki, you've got a copy of what I sent each other, HOTF. And I think we're going to end up with, if it's a three or a four, and it's larger than fifteen acres, then there are certain criteria which we can, as the planning board, apply to say, yeah, that's fine, you can do a standard subdivision. But if there are things that require preservation, we can mandate that it's going to be a conservation subdivision, even though it's not a five acre, a five lot, even though it's a three or a four. Smaller than fifteen acres and two lots, it didn't make sense to do that. But three or four, because of your input to this, I'm pretty sure we've, I mean, we've already accepted that this is an idea we ought to do and the language is being drafted for it.
So we, Peter and I went back and forth quite a bit. We have three things that all of you guys have. We have the current town subdivision code, just for you to kind of come through.
Which does have posterity, but it's never been used.
It's a lot of information right now. State 278, which is based on the town and that gives the town board the authority to give the planning board the authority to be able to make smaller lots and the Coxaki conservation that they created. So you guys have them all, you're early with them. We're going to get through the workshop. I have spoke to John Lyons, I do plan on doing like a part two, which will be like a follow-up of, you guys can digest this a little bit and then we can come up with questions. So you can feel free to shoot emails at me, call me, and I will keep a running log of questions. We're hoping for early fall to bring him in and kind of piggyback off of this. Again, as Peter said, this is a lot of information.
But we have on the town's website, the second draft of the proposed subdivision revisions. And we have been processing, that is Jeff and me and Deborah primarily, and going through with the HOTF committee piece by piece, changes that are a response to people's comments, including the comments that Peter made, including the email that went out from the.
Absolutely, but that's kind of separate than what we're doing here.
I know, but we are already halfway down the road on this. And what we have is a draft zoning code that is going to go to public hearings sometime in the fall. So we're not needing to reinvent the wheel. To understand what these other things are, in the context, I think, I'm proposing, we need to understand what these other things are in the context of what we already have on paper that we are going to be delivering to the town board for their decision in the next month or so. We're not inventing this from this place. We already have spent two years with one of the best planners in the state drafting something with input, that we've got a lot of input, we've made a lot of changes, but that's all going to be like on one document. So everybody can see what changes we've made from draft two. And it is things like including minor subdivisions, subject to the planning board's.
Discretion.
Discretion.
I mean, most of what we do on the planning board are the block line revisions and minor subdivisions. And originally, when this came up, I said to myself, well, we don't get that many big subdivisions anymore. Well, we checked it two of them. And I can tell you there's more coming because I know someone I'm going to survey, they're over seventy-five acres.
Right.
And they have fields and they have.
Everybody wants to monetize their holdings because the prices.
Some of the questions like I would have for John Lyons is, if you, if we feel that a lot should be a conservation subdivision, but the developer says, no, I want my five-acre lots, I'm not quite sure legally where we stand on that.
If we pass the new law, they don't have a choice.
Yeah.
The new law is within our discretion to do, law offices have already looked at it. If we pass a new law, a major subdivision, which is five lots or more out of the existing lot, the density has to be neutral. It's going to be the same number of units per average acre, but the house site can be much smaller and the conserved area is mandated at fifty percent or more. If we pass it, it has to pass.
So the difficulty is, so if you're in a five-acre zoning and you take out a whole bunch for conservation, now you say that one acre lots. Does the owner of that one acre lot get to own part of it?
That's one of the things that I hope John's presentation is going to help us.
Well, they don't have, they don't have the answer to that yet. That's not been taken. There was one, Article 278 says that the applicant can apply for conservation subdivision if they feel that's the adaptation, or the planning board can suggest.
But the town is not prohibited from requiring it.
So.
We can be tougher than the state law and that's what we're proposing to do. That's where John already has seen the documents and the five-acre, the five-lot subdivision has been in there from the beginning.
I mean, I told you guys from the gate, the five years I've been with you, you know, like, you go into subdivisions and this is what you look at, you look at conservation.
We already do, and a lot of the things he's talking about are online maps.
You guys are such an amazing team and you all bring something different. The things that I miss, which I'm going to miss, I've been learning all along, but you guys, you come right to the table and someone then points it out and we talk to the applicant and nine times out of ten, ten out of ten typically, we end up approving applications and we work together and we get there.
Now, the question of how that conserved land is managed.
There's a lot of options.
Has always been that that is negotiated between the planning board and the applicant so that it will work as well as it can.
Right, I've seen all different things. It can go to the town, it could go to a separate total entity.
Woodstock Land Conservation.
It could be land conservation, it could be entities, it could be just a typical homeowners association that somebody's name, dated, there's.
The guy, you know, the sale of that forest land to fam acres to a guy with a DEC permit was another way to do it. So that whole landlocked lot got, it wasn't a problem anymore because somebody else owned it, it was continuous to theirs.
Yes.
And for a member of the Pino Calor, one small comment. You're worried about the developer, but if I were someone buying a home in one of those subdivisions and there was all this forever wild land that came with my neighborhood. And there was a, I didn't have to get in a car to go somewhere to walk my dog. That there was a little nature trail that went through that, I would pay top dollar.
But you see, what the reality is that developers and landowners now want to control their land. And so if they only have one acre, but they have some rights to go through the other forty acres, they share those rights with other people.
Depends on how we set it up.
Pretty complicated.
Yeah.
Depends on how we set it up.
But you have people coming from the city who are used to living in condos, they love to have everything taken care of. Where, you know.
Why into the age of.
I know, I know, I'm going to be quiet, but you know.
But I mean, when I see, when I see day in and day out for developers, when lots, when properties get bought, they figure out, they go to the surveyor, figure out how many lots they can get out of them. And then they come to the planning board, well, they've already bought the thing and they've already gone through this whole thing. And then the planning board will say, well, sorry, but it's not going to work that way.
But we're asking them to do a pre-sketch and ideally they ought to do it before they buy the land.
Well, unfortunately, that's not the way it works. What it works is that the real estate agent sells them the hundred acres and they look at it as five-acre zoning and they go to the engineer and say, well, put me five-acre lots in there. And then we come along and say, what are some weapons? You can't develop that, but you can own it, you can't develop.
And let's talk about access.
But, but doing that initial plan is a part of the step. Because in order to know how many lots you could have of whatever size they end up being, you need to have that preliminary plan anyway.
But we've got a long way to go. I mean, I talk to the real estate agents all the time and they have no clue that this is what's going on.
Well, it's all out there in the public. All they have to do is read the newspaper and go on the town website and read the proposed code. And we're not getting any input from Realtors at all.
No.
Not a word that I'm aware of has come from Realtors. Town committees, absolutely, members of the public, absolutely. And we are reading, evaluating, and responding to every single comment. I don't mean we're going to send them an individual email. It's all going to be available for them to see what we did. And in many cases, like came in in lieu of, we took it out because so many people said, oh, they'll just pay the money and then you won't have the results you want.
I mean, developers are barely, in real estate, you are barely aware of the fact that Woodstock has a wetland zone. Barely aware.
I know.
Barely. In fact, these top engineers and lawyers and everybody for Woodstock, the national, wrote right on it, state weapons. There's no state weapons there. And that's how far out that they don't even know that they're town weapons. And these guys are top lawyers that.
And they're still protected even though they're town weapons, they're protected.
So it's a challenge, but.
Yeah, we're going to have a lot of educating to do and some unhappy people and maybe a few lawsuits, who knows. But this is. But this is within our right to do, and John is one of the people who looked at all this stuff. And Melissa looked at it and caught some things.
Absolutely.
What do you think about the whole idea of conservation subdivision?
I love it, but you know, I think, uh, Adam can actually pass it.
An absolute real one. I mean, of how it's going to be managed.
Process and we got to kind of work with that, but. Yeah, but they can authorize the planning board to entertain the idea, I guess.
If they pass, if they pass the new code, conservation subdivision will be a requirement for five a, five lots or more. It won't be an option. It'll be a requirement. If they do what I suggested as a result of Peter's input, two or, two or three or four, no, three or four.
Acres?
Three or four lots will be within our discretion if the site requires.
I mean, Kixaki, I think.
The discretion of the site. We see it's pretty simple that there's no question.
Yeah, it's a flat piece of land and it all works and there's no weapons on it. That's how likely, but you know, good enough.
I mean, you, you, you could take the Lashy Funeral Home, for instance, and that could have been a conservation subdivision. So you could have taken that field out and made four little tiny lots, you know?
How big is that site altogether?
I think it's, it would, the, I could be totally wrong on this. Two, two acres of it was undeveloped, that big field.
Yeah.
And then I think where the houses were, were like another.
Let's see, we're talking.
When the zoning here is one hundred and fifty.
See, I don't think that's big enough.
Now there's still center actually.
But they could still do it.
And then she's, she is planning.
I know, I mean, Melissa.
Yeah, but they were in the process of buying. I think there's some things with it, yeah.
Okay.
Heard different things on there.
So let's listen to what John has to say about managing this.
Alright, so I just want to stress, we don't want to get too much in the leaves. We want to watch this. It is almost two hours and we're here. We have a few other things we're going to do. Um, so yes, we're going to get back to this, but keep in your head, write some notes down, get back to me. I'm going to keep a list. Um, yeah, we're here.
Yeah, I, I was hoping to add one thing, if I may, to the conversation. What was that?
Hi Laura.
You say, okay, you say, okay? Um, yeah, you know, all I wanted to say was, when you do a subdivision, I know if you have something huge, like a hundred acres or two hundred acres, you may have this huge thing, what do you do with it? But some of the subdivisions are going to be more manageable. Hypothetically, if you have a twenty lot property and you, and you're in an R five, you get four lots. And if you have, say, two, two and fourteen, then the person, one person's buying a fourteen acre lot, and you don't have, you have, don't have to worry about what do you do about the whole thing? Because some people do want a big lot. They like having the open space. So I just wanted to point out that not every lot may necessarily be an itty bitty lot. It may be that, uh, again, it, it may be that you have instead of four or five acre lots, you have three two acre lots and one fourteen, and then you don't have to worry about what to do with the extra. So there, there may be somewhere you do, you have eighty acres, what do you do with it? But that might not be, that might not happen a lot in Woodstock. That's all I wanted to share. As Judy pointed out, there's different models of how you handle it, and I just want to share that's one model.
There are a lot of possibilities, and we'll have to negotiate with the developer the best way to do it.
Thank you, Laura.
Okay, thank you for letting me speak. Thanks.
Alright, ready? Here we go.
That's probably what we want John to spend a lot of time on if he comes in on his own.
You can mute it?
It's not on yet.
I was just waiting for John to talk. I don't remember.
Great.
There we go.
Yay, yay, great.
Oh, look at our friend.
But you were muted.
This is the one that we've already done.
Good. Uh, thank you. He asked permission.
I was thinking about sending you that.
Come up if you can't see. I mean, I know it's smaller, it's a recorded, I can also send it to you.
It's very hard to hear.
We'll be talking about a variety of, uh, different techniques that are available. Um, but I think one of the things that I like to. Um, one of the big ideas that I like to turn with people coming away from this um, program is to be thinking about long-term stewardship. As the previous topic, the planning process begins. Uh, I think that one of the, um, I think one of the biggest problems that I see in my practice is the instances of, of sections, um, either required or, uh, it's chosen by plan or by. A lot of thought doesn't end up being due to issue of stewardship until the end of the process, and then that will be the kind of activity where uh, applicants, uh, start trying to set the basis that we can, or some kind of rule. And I think that when you look, see, is that plenty more. Sometimes things can be uncontrolled. My feeling is that I think that the conservation subdivision process, uh, can work, work more effectively from a long-term, uh, effectiveness standpoint, when there is thought being given uh, to stewardship, often when you go through some of the things that Ted outlined. Uh, and also where the planning board takes more of an active role in, uh, thinking about the stewardship and trying to help arrange for, uh, the, um, one of the things that, very, when you start thinking about stewardship at the beginning, uh, of the process is to get some thought to, to buy a particular, um, piece of land and be conservative in some way. Um, uh, the examples that Teddy, um, showed land that, um, had, had a property that cultural like to make a place where there were natural resources that, that are where the, um, um, preservation, uh, sometimes there's a wider op, there's a wider desire to, uh, preserve rural town. Uh, and sometimes there's a desire to, uh, conserve, uh, lands for reference. And you need to make a look at, uh, what we both. Uh, and when you're not, uh, the mechanism that gets used, uh, to ensure conservation are good enough to offer these goals. Um, the present, I have a quick picture that I can use. And so when you're, you're thinking about how the land is doing, you need to think about the nuts and bolts about how that zoning will be done. And again, I see this in, now, that piece, uh, where, um, conservation land has upside, uh, the applicant's been told to go out you know, uh, playing more like that, like the land is protected by some agreement. And the developer has difficulty in finding a party to qualify for, telling people these people, we'll talk about that in the rise. Uh, in my practice, we represent, uh, a number of planning boards, but I, and I also uh, have served for years on the works of land trusts and in particular of the stewardship. So later on, uh, we'll talk about, um, the land trust perspective and how that needs to be included in the time, uh, about stewardship when you're, um, talking about, uh, conservation subdivision uh, in this designing phase. This is just a reminder, just gets around, get thinking as soon as possible about, uh, long-term. Um, the other concept that needs to, uh, that I think many more members need to bear in mind, and applicants do, is that, um, forever and the mechanisms that are chosen for, uh, stewardship of conserved land have to be that if you really want to achieve success, you have to put in place the mechanisms that are best calculated, uh, to achieve the vision for, uh, conservation of the time of the subdivision. And you have to remember, um, this is something that I talked with clients that, um, in the, the safety conservation. You have to think over the long term. It's, um, it's not only the commitment that we have today in the conservation, but you know, these, uh, mechanisms for the conservation that are being discussed for a long time, but going to end up being diminished by, I think, years from now. If John knew us, if you're really proficient in, about the process of being right for you. And so, um, those mechanisms have to be flexible, um, they have to be matched to the circumstances. And the right nuts and bolts have to be, uh, put into place to make sure it'll be as effective as possible. Um, for. I'm going to go with, and look at the, the need for the options that are available were, uh, to stewardship of conserved land in the long term. We'll talk about conservation easements, we'll talk about, um, the ownership of. Or in the process, we'll talk about deep restrictions, um, homeowners, uh, to use the ownership of these structures. Um, the state lots, and then, uh, what are. This is a big slide and I apologize for, uh, trying to attack on it, but.
And it's not readable. Can we get a copy of this slide?
Sure.
Were, um, the preservation of conserved land in the long term. It's clearly the best tool that's available for sure. Uh, in a conservation easement, uh, what happens is that, uh, the landowner, um, extinguishes, um, development lands on a particular piece of property, or, uh, property, and then an easement is given to third party organization that actually steps in and actively monitors the clear needs of that property over the long term. And it has a responsibility for the stewardship of that easement that's to be concerned and most of the time uh, exists just for the purpose. Um, one of the wonderful things about conservation that's held by a new trust is that the planning board also, um, can trust in your, with this, or with the easement. Um, you've already, uh, set forth a submission, uh, caring for these properties that are a lot of critical bond and creative trust as to how that's monitored, conservation easements, and how to be good stewards of the land, um, going forward in perpetuity. Um, most land trusts, uh, are credited by the, um, land trust alliance. You have your relationship to a five, and, um, there's quite a myriad of concepts that are being credited by the O T A. And one of the nice things from planning boards is that, don't be afraid. Uh, separate tomorrow on all the sites and showing that it is quite a piece after going through this. Uh, land trust that's a credit, uh, who do all the job in monitoring and. There are, we'll talk a little bit about. Um, the land trust act there and similar results of, uh, um, that act of stewardship, is something that some really, um, come across as a big, or a change of, you know, so it'll be difficult. Um, there are municipalities on plan for easements, and we've been involved in instances where that's happened. Um, in my opinion, um, it's not the best choice. Uh, simply because, uh, municipalities aren't able to set up, uh, the easy, more consistent, you know, based on the situation. So, anything for, uh, depending on how you do that job well. Uh, municipalities are not set up to meet the stewardship responsibilities. Um, they, uh, I've found that their record, the monitoring easements that they do, um, is, um, responding, um, they can sometimes be reluctant to expend funds that are necessary uh, to do more, I, um, actually aspire to changes in political administration and, uh, cause for variations in the commitment to, um, being a good steward. And it's not favoring against municipalities, it's just, it's just not a great, you know, product. I think instances where I have found, there's, there's many, I have a situation where there are, there's, um, an interest of the municipality that happens outside of, um, the need for a conservation. Um, that we got recently in the office, is where the conserved lands, um, were not only uh, to be conserved in order to conserve natural resources value of the property, but those conserved lands also happen in, as a part of the water, of the municipality's water supply. And so in that instance, the municipality is very, very motivated to, uh, to give them property, it's very, very, to make sure that, uh, stewardship without talking to the, like, um, the stewardship. Um, also, uh, the applicant's perspective needs to be considered, uh, with regard to conservation easements. Um, it's usually applicant's, uh, responsibility in the process to approach uh, a land trust to, uh, strengthen with a land trust to, uh, maybe enter into a contract with the land trust, that's a, of, 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 um, and there are costs associated with all of these efforts. And in addition, uh, some land trusts also affect, uh, in the downing which is, uh, to the land trust, uh, which is, um, uh, offsetting uh, the cost of the, of monitoring these consequences that the land trust, uh, may, may be, uh, uh, they may need for these. Um, applicants, uh, the, you know, a lot of applicants that are running um, some applicants, two million, thousand, sort of, finding, or of, in the, in the, about the, the process. And then, um, you have the other, I, I do, we have many, many applicants that don't really go need the process quite as much, so we have the talented applicants that don't really have the kind of funding that sometimes, uh, is necessarily added to the cost that you would spend um, to be willing to, 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 to. There are other expenses that you can use. There are other expenses that you can, that, there are technical expenses, the easement area of the property needs to be defined, that needs to be surveyed, there needs to be a description of that property. So, there are lots of nuts and bolts expenses that go into, giving you some help. So, again, you know, giving thought to these things, growing on and process, I think it's been done by everybody. And better communication is key, and better with, 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 with. Now, moving down on the, of, 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 other mechanisms that are available. When, it's going to be, if it is transferring property to a land trust or another qualified environmental organization. And in that instance, the land trust would be the steward of the property, as the owner of the property, that's normally a level of stewardship that would be a fairly high of competence. The issue that needs to be discussed with the land trust is the duration of ownership, whether the plans for the land trust to own the property in perpetuity works, or if the plan is only to own the property for a, um, that needs to be passed out at the beginning to make sure that, whether the plans are for the property will be compliant with the requirements of the subdivisions and requirements of the town. For many years, the land trusts were mostly interested in easements and not interested in whatever the title. I think that that's changed over the past few years in time with more of a, um, so, this might be a tool that makes itself a merger, to have a little bit more flexibility in time. And the last question you see on the slide there is whether the acquisition process is going to involve payments and, what are the expenses, and again, those nuts and bolts are something that you can't really ignore. Sometimes they go actually into influencing the practical availability of these particular options. The deed restriction is, when we're moving down, equality, deed restrictions are very common. I have this instrument, actually you can have a declaration of covenants in a restriction, which is an instrument that encompasses both restrictions and covenants. Typically, restrictions are provisions in that instrument that restricts the right to use land that you want to, as the normal property rights, that you definitely require property. Covenants would be the portion that would impose the firm's obligation on, on parts of, so that like, we see, obligation, obligation, it would be according to covenants. You're seeing deed restrictions functioning fairly often or used to do, as the means of conserving, you're making sure that this property is, is conserved. They can erase the uses that would normally be allowed on the property in that, in, 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 in. The, the deed restriction, the restriction provisions often are referred to maybe as the, 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 the part of the compliance of the subdivision, so they have noticed the, um, the, the problem or what makes deed restrictions less attractive is the fact that the stewardship obligations, some of them can be imposed by companies, but it's, in my experience, those, of, the stewardship obligations are only this nearly so often that people get with a conservation, many statistics, um, maybe thirty, forty pages long, really detailed details, explaining, okay, what can be done, what can't be done, who's responsible for this activity, how the violations getting enforced, they really, modern conservation, they cover a lot of things. And that's part of what makes that, and then the recording, that, that, that is part of what makes that, that, that effective and robust. Deed restrictions don't have that same, yeah, they, they can work, and if they work well, I think caution I would provide is that, but again, they tend, they sometimes tend, something that gets introduced at the beginning of the process, the applicants that, that are in the law setting, that are conservation areas, they are called, oh yeah, they're needed, to show us some of the, that is almost, you're accurate, but. I have seen really declarations of covenants, actually that are very, and can be very, so, I think that just, that just means something that, you can, and, and, you'll see that you may encounter easements where the asset is lost in both, um, the whole of conservation, uh, whole of conservation, lots of how, so, the deed restriction is part of that. The plan, actively, to, 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 to make that tool work as effectively as possible. A homeowners association is another, is another option, it's not always available. Often, the subdivision comes to the homeowners, so, the purpose of homeowners generally, as you probably already know, is to, one, making that function thoughtful, while, being more, of, common area of subdivision, of, sometimes you have definitely conserved lands, of course, and, and there has to be, there has to be someone that owns, or, 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 set aside, they're set aside for the benefit of the people, the subdivision. And the homeowners, which is, which is, there would be a corporation, and that begins, that, um, in, 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 they're all in line out, but there's, like, a, um, so, the homeowners association there, I think, um, by, again, that, that, um, as a, um, for caring of the conserved land. Now, the difference, the big difference, is the, and the, that the H O A isn't, um, set up to solely focus on, of, conserving, even though it has an affirmative stewardship obligation, it's not really built for exclusively, and so, some, where there will be a homeowners association, it needs to have some discussion during the, with the applicant about the responsibility that these two are for, the conserved land, and homeowners association have to be, you have to apply, to be, to be, to be, to be, to be reviewed by the, kind of, officially, approved, um, perspective of the conserved land, associated, and, 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 and the development where, and we need to do in the planning process to just make sure that we stewardship obligations of, 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 and, and, to, the internal governance of the homeowners. At the end of this process, sometimes the applicant's H O A already updated, money, right before, it becomes more difficult to, it tends to, and, and, to, to the, internal governance of the homeowners. At the end of this process, sometimes the applicant's H O A already updated, money, right before, it becomes more difficult to, it tends to, I think, um, it is really, um, you can also have municipal, uh, uh, party rights enforcement for, as a backstop to some of the H O A, uh, that needs to be dispelled from the, from the process.
What are you doing?
What's wrong?
I'm not doing anything.
We can hack and shut all the direct doors.
It's buffering then.
Yeah, I've never seen this before.
We've been getting it all week.
Well, what he was just talking about, that we deal with every day.
Every day. It's the option.
There's conversations we do every day.
There's always a line.
You can also have municipal, uh, uh, party rights enforcement for, as a backstop to some of the H O A obligations, that, uh.
Just don't mess with it.
I didn't mess with it before, do I?
Um, municipal, uh, it's kind of secure, but it's not secure, it's, I guess, it's something that's uncommon. It's a possibility, of, title to the property, certain, to take, because municipality, municipality the owner and the steward, and, that kind of, uh, it, I haven't seen it happen a lot in, here, a commitment on part of the municipality to, 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 to.
Yeah, the COO is the model there, I mean, it was controversial.
Uh, once, uh, part of, as municipal, very secure, means of, of, assuring, conservation of the property, there was a, may, that, our land, it's extremely difficult to be, um, the, one of the things that you think about also is that, you have to make sure before you go, that the municipality, for how this land is doing is a max, or complaining about how this land is doing, and, you know, they're all usually, for example, you don't wanna have considerable, that, the plan, to, preserve rural, to, 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 municipality wants to come partly, this might happen, remember, in, in, there are people that have controls that are not really familiar with what happens, but you just don't want, um, the, you know, it's a, that, um, or you, that, that doesn't comply with, initially. What are the, so, that, you're talking about, some of the partners that think, should have, when you're giving thought to, these, two companies, that, 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 stewardship. Since a conservation easement, I think it's in, um, started with, land trust, and to, and, and, I think that obviously, I think which, representatives of the local land trust to sit together, have a, and, and, each other with the, that each has, on the process, and, try to get familiar with what everybody's trying to take out of the process for themselves. You have to remember that the choice to set the easement by a land trust, is a, is a, you don't have to do it, and there are lots of factors that they will be, uh, they will make sure, property, how it will be stayed with, permission of our, um, how difficult and expensive will our stewardship responsibility in terms of being, um, you know, a lot of, sponsored by, uh, sending humans out every year to walk the burner, property, still in the, uh, conservative condition that it's supposed to be, but there's a possibility. Do you need a, of, monitoring, there's still a possibility, so, so what is the, you know, the, the, um, going to be very conscious of, what's off the going, to, to, to have, sensible, we're going to essentially pay attention to that, this, so, I would encourage a dialogue with most, at, on a regional basis, and you can usually, like, the land trust that operates in your area, and I think you'll be fine, if you want to sit down with them, find that, you said it should be, and I think, um, it's good for everybody, and many folks will be happy.
Can you spell for just a second? I have a proposal. This is really good stuff, and I wonder, and I don't know if they, I mean, I'm, one of the things that's happening is I'm listening to him, is I'm taking more seriously Peter's concern about the, the developer's desire to get return on their investment. And if we met with the land trust, and I don't know what the legality of doing this is, okay? But if we sat down with the land trust and we said, you guys are wanting to buy the Woodstock National Property and you were not able to, if we developed a plan with those developers that involved the kind of conservation subdivision that we really mean, as opposed to the one that they drew on their little drawing, we would need, I think, to at least consider whether the land conservancy would come in on that.
I do believe that they have met with Woodstock Land Conservancy at this point.
Yeah, I think they have, and they're trying to get him to be more responsive to their concerns.
But, but, when I watched this, before we even knew any of this, it made my notes of saying I wanted to bring Woodstock Land Conservancy, and, and forever ago.
If we talk in, in general, about the kinds of conservation subdivisions that they would be interested in, and this is an example of something that's on the horizon.
I send them our agendas all the time, like, we, we do kind, we definitely have a working relationship. It was much more connected when Max An was involved, we, we talked a lot, I mean, not as, as, as connected as I feel like I was when Max An was on, but that made my list, when I listened to this, I'm like, we need to at some point meet with Woodstock, I just, there's a lot to it, and right now with this, it would have to be completely separate.
And that's the question, how do we do that in a way that it's not?
Even this, you mentioning it, technically we shouldn't be mentioning a case during our, but it's not, it's not even an application, it's just an idea.
Well, in the future, we are gonna review the Kuk Saki, and in that, we'll find the nuts and bolts. Because I gotta tell you, everything that John's talking about, I deal with every single day, it's nothing that, we have easements for everything, we have, I stake out easements for all kinds of, we have, you know, if there's change of things in subdivisions, they go into either easements or into the homeowners, that's all, all new. So, we need to look at what other people have done to solve the problem.
This is something that early on in the H O T F work, I raised, like, how is this actually gonna get managed? And it is something that we need to be thinking about, if this thing pan. And it is something that we need to be thinking about, if this thing passes, we need to be ahead of the game in knowing. And I hope it passes, but we need to be ahead of the game in thinking about what kinds of options we would have that are realistic.
Right. Okay, I I need to come in here, when you're talking about H O T F, I know.
Sorry, Housing Oversight Task Force.
Okay.
Is the group that has been revising the zoning.
That's all with Kirk on it.
I'm on it.
Oh, you're on it too, oh, you're on it.
I'm on it.
Yes, with Kirk and Deborah.
And Deborah, okay.
And Richard Heatherman. And uh Michael, I don't know his last name, who's part of the zoning.
Jimmy, you can feel free, call me anytime after.
Yeah, I had some questions.
There's a lot to know.
There's a lot to know, it's like.
We are well down the road.
See, a lot of this has come up because of the possible application by the the Woodstock National.
Now, I know this is.
In which they have a very good reason for wanting to do what they're doing. They made a hundred and twenty one acre lots, and and that's in there, that works for them. But it doesn't work for all developers.
You mean if they make instead?
Right, it just works, it just works for them, uh because they want a golf course and everything else.
Oh, no, I'll see something else.
But the, what they didn't even, what we didn't know, when their lawyer presented it to us, they presented it as Article two seventy eight. Well, they didn't even realize that there's no sense talking to us because of the planning board doesn't, I mean, the town board doesn't approve it, dead in the water, doesn't even go anywhere. Uh and the other thing, if you read Article two seventy eight, it says that the planning board can make a conservation subdivision if it benefits the town. Not the landlord, not the landlord, but the town.
And if we pass the new zoning.
So you have to give some thought to that.
They would be required to do it in a way that we recognize as being really conservation, which.
And and I, in.
The dog trust is not.
Right.
In that pot potential applicant's defense. I met with them and it was my idea to bring them in for a pre-skinch because I felt that was the best way to handle. This will be applications in every criteria that we have, and legally within their rights to come to us with these applications.
As I said, there's a bunch more coming up, if you look at Zimbra, wherever the real estate thing is.
So.
There's a seventy five acre lot coming up right now, for sale, gonna come up, and it's gonna be go through subdivisions. They don't have any idea that this is possible.
Well, we need to do some educating of the realtors.
And we asked and we never got an answer on another minor thing.
You didn't need me in that.
Oh, you don't really have to, it's it's considered due diligence, I mean, the first house that I bought, I went into it blind like an idiot.
Listen, I I bought a Victorian house and nobody told me I couldn't have an apartment.
Yeah.
And I couldn't have an apartment, not here.
Of Michigan.
Yeah. So I mean, there's such a thing as when the buyer beware.
They don't know. The money is it.
Yeah.
Anyway.
So the point was, we don't wanna get too much in the weeds, we just, we wanna make you guys familiar with this, we want your brains turning and moving and we're headed here.
No, I'd like that.
And this is perfect.
Done here for a.
And that's my game plan.
Okay, we'll get, we'll hit John with some real specific questions when we get down to it, I know he's just going over.
I mean.
He's so busy right now, but that we've been in touch.
Particularly with regard to the new zoning, which he has vetted.
Absolutely.
To know how this aspect of it would work, because this is the part that really is the most different from what's been happening.
Absolutely, and I think you should come in from H O T F standpoint and ask him that also.
So. But H O T F doesn't have.
I know he is so busy, he is so busy right now, he's really tough to get a look.
Well, I wanna say with some apology to Peter. He's raising the practicalities, I've been saying this is something we can handle, but we need to know how we're gonna be able to handle it in advance. Because the realtor, you know, the landlord, the landlord owner wants his money, and the realtor wants his money, and they may not care about the ecological component.
Right.
So we really have to know what we have, what works best to do this. And if the land trust isn't able to be interested because they don't have the money to do it, that leaves us in a much more uncomfortable position.
Right. I'm gonna get out of this just so we can continue and get you guys out of here, because I know it's was long, you're all gonna have to.
How much is left of it?
Twenty five minutes.
Oh, Lord.
Right.
Yeah.
It takes some.
Stop share, yay, okay, so let's let's, thank you guys, think about this, just have it in your heads, it's coming.
Can we get this slide?
I have it in my notes, I'm gonna work on doing that.
Oh, you definitely know what the issues are, as we talked about it, but the slide's.
I mean, I have to. As it was, it was John and I conversation, oh yeah, let me use what I watch.
Yeah.
And then Ingrid, Ingrid had sent me the link, so I did a little, so let me see what I got and what I get and all.
I mean, I'm willing to watch the rest of it on my own time, just to see what it says.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
And I would understand it much better, because we're just in here, so.
And we, emailing it all, I'll give you the link here, right on my desk.
Yeah, it's just, I think it's easier.
All the folks who want to work with and drive X companies. And I'm.
Sixty dollars.
I'm excited, I'm like, I got that candidate. I'd like to go right on the town, yes, and I can, I would be really to look them up for you and help you with that.
You know, I'm a system of yours.
And I can, I would be really to look them up for you and help you with that, oh, no, no, I don't figure it out.
We can see it.
Going back in school.
We can absolutely see there.
Yeah, and it's just like if you.
Well, I used to do it, give it some.
You said a ton of.
If you, if you.
I didn't bring my bucket, which is hard to see if I can.
Tell them on the New York code.
Uh huh.
You will get access to their.
And I'll make them happy, it was quicker. Yeah, and that's a good.
You know, it's.
This is all fun and. Thank you. All right, we we just have a few things to get through.
So uh.
Unfinished business.
Let's see what we got, the topic is.
All right, so what we have to do, we have to.
Uh yeah, that we did that, and kind of the talking thing, I think we need to look what they did and how they do it, and how it works. Questions for John Lance coming up, so unfinished business with some draft resolutions. If Judy wants to run them.
I would like to move all above draft resolutions, including L. Riffey and Gake. So that is Perry, S U P twenty three zero six eight three, Bosicka and McGlellan Whiting, P B twenty three one two three six. And Jackson Lane, S P R twenty three oh two two eight E, is that L. Riffey and Gake, that last one?
Yep, and then L. Riffey and Gake, yep.
Oh, no, that's twenty three oh three four nine A.
Yep, you you, yep, there's four of them.
So I am moving approval of those draft resolutions all of the above.
Second. Wow, you're in, James, okay, everybody say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um we just, we need one more motion, because we just did this kind of quickly because of how it happened. I just need make someone to make a motion to deem the applications completely for Perry and everything.
That was the coloring of the wall that the great went out and checked, and it was okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so. Peter can just pretend that he said, well, I just said he was gonna make a motion, he just made a motion to make the team, the application is complete. I go seconds.
No second.
Perfect. Everybody.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, well, our new member, uh welcome aboard.
Again, we're sorry, we'll like formally introduce you and let you talk and everything next meeting, next meeting, September seventh, it's next week, it's back to back because.
And I am not here because I'm giving a reading.
Yes, you're not here, yes, you never sent me that email.
I told you that.
And I will be staying, but I'm zooming in.
You told him, but you were getting emailed.
I'm sorry.
Because I have a couple of vacations, because I didn't know I was doing this.
So we need.
We need Jennifer and Greg to.
Yeah.
I will send you notes.
But I will, I will come, I will.
You are my hero, thank you.
Okay, I'm six hours ahead.
I'm like, I'm understanding your background and.
Oh, yeah.
First background.
Close in to a juror.
Kind of doctor you are.
Second.
Thank you.
Also, but I advertised.
Were you?
Yes.
Can you say how it is?
I'm a PhD.
So what?
You know me from where?
I'm Larry Schwartz's partner.
They have to subdivide, they want to subdivide before you.
Did I what?
And put some in conserv.
Yes.
Well.